Good morning. Today's Thursday, May 12, 2022, and we're here for a work session. And as always, we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. And Tim, can you please say three?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Tim. Okay, everyone, we're going to move on to our first discussion item, which is a discussion surrounding the April police report. Chief Hagamilla, good morning.
Morning, Chief.
It feels like we just did this.
What's that?
It feels like we just did this.
I know.
Yeah, I know, doesn't it?
We're getting a little bit of feedback up here, John.
Yeah. Slide away.
Okay, Chief, fire away.
Okay.
No pun intended.
Still some feedback.
Everyone should have the monthly report. It was emailed out this week. Also went out to the media this morning, so they should have it. Numbers continue to rebound from last year. So basically, everything's up. There was a reduction in motor vehicle accidents this last month, I should say. The rest are way up. So we went from 33 and 21 up to 90 last month. So that's a pretty big jump. The other part of that is the arraignments. So about two-thirds of those 90 actually stayed for arraignment. So that's...
It's better?
Yeah, better.
Also means it must be more serious charges to be able to hold them.
Correct.
With the bail reform.
It's not good. Revenue is just shy, but that's always due to the way the billing cycle works. On the crimes, we're up only by two from last month. But there was a reduction actually in the UCR crimes were down.
Okay, and those are the violent crimes?
Violent and property crimes.
And property crimes. It's good to see the UCR going down.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, those are the most higher level of crimes.
The other thing I just want to chat a little about is the overdoses are up, which is not a good thing. We had four fatal overdoses last month.
Is that due to fentanyl, or do we know?
Usually you don't know right away. You have to wait for the toxicology to come back. But I assume it would be fentanyl. I see that on the county report, so.
We also had the marshal's office.
Yes.
Did you want to talk about that?
Yeah, they were here, I believe it was Wednesday. Wednesday to do some warrant, arrest warrants countywide, not only in Riverhead. So we actually participated with the marshals in that, in that job that morning. Basically, no arrests here until the following day we picked up one, so.
Do we still have somebody like when we had Detective Hernandez?
Yeah, so this time around, they actually deputized, I think there was probably about a dozen of our officers as US Marshals. Yes, supposedly, not only did they go for these warrants, but it was supposed to be a team-building exercise. So we have someone new in the marshal's office. We actually have the former sheriff, DeMarco, is the US Marshal for this area.
So it was more of a training?
Yeah, getting to know everybody.
Which is great.
Yeah.
In case we need to do it.
For sure.
Good to hear.
Chief, when you, and arrests go up like by 57, like on average timeframe for like these arrests, the officers tied up, one hour in the rest, two hours, what is it?
The problem, the rest, the time spent on arrest has gone up. And it's all due to the amount of information that we have to give to the DA's office before we're allowed to proceed with the arrest. So we have to give them the packet upfront. They have to review it. And then they get back to us if there's any changes or anything else to be corrected. We take care of that, and then we can proceed with the processing. So that has increased the time greatly as far as people, officers on arrest, so.
And I don't want to just, sorry, Bob, not to change the topic, but I'd like to be able to sit down, I think, in the future to have discussions on adding more law enforcement. I think that when the arrests are going up and officers are being tied up, they might know that we have some other offices that are out on injuries and light work, but just, I'm looking at the numbers here. So the numbers are going up, arrests are going up. And I think that we should be open to, as a board, to discuss additional hires in the future to make it compensate for this, so that we can stabilize the numbers.
Town's growing.
Yeah.
Chief, I have a question. And I know when bail reform happened, that there was all this reporting that was required. So it goes to the county. Do they expedite this, or is there a lag, is there a wait time to get a response?
It's usually, it just takes them a time to review it, is what the problem is. It's not that we're in a queue or anything else like that. Usually, you know, it's looked at right away. It just takes them time to do that. So they go over it with a fine-tooth comb. And that's going to the district attorney's office.
What's your opinion of that whole process?
I like having a good working relationship with the DA's office. And I don't think that's so much of a hindrance. It's just that all this stuff that we have to have on the arrest that they have to have. So it's a lot of information that they have to have upfront, and that makes it a long process.
Would you scale down that information? I mean...
Would I like to go back to the old way? Yes, I would like to go back to the old way, but it is what it is.
It does also alleviate mistakes that make it, once they go before the court, where a case may potentially be thrown out because of an error, we just...
Yeah, it's another set of eyes looking at your arrest.
Right, it's another set of eyes, and it can clean it up a little better.
So that's not, that's not a bad thing. Just takes time.
But yeah, by the time you fax it over and somebody gets to it, and definitely, it lengthens the process. There's no doubt about it.
I mean, I think there is, you know, things that they're trying to change to expedite a little faster. They know our concerns. We met with the DA back when he first took office, the new DA. And we expressed to him that the amount of time is lengthy, so anything that he can do to shorten it would be helpful.
Good, thank you.
Now, Chief, we can sit down next week so we can talk about crime stats and personnel issues and all that.
True.
Okay, so...
I'm here.
Great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chief.
Well, thank you.
Have a good weekend.
You too.
All ready?
We're ready.
Wait a minute.
Thursday, we're close. Close.
I probably won't see him for two days.
Let's hope you don't have to.
Didn't know if you would give us...
Yeah, let's hope I don't have to see him. I probably won't.
I thought you were giving us Friday off.
I thought you would give us next two days off.
No. We meet about once a week, so this is it for us. Anyway, thank you, Chief. In our next discussion, which is a matter surrounding a possible change to Chapter 301, drive-through restaurants in Wading River. I understand this was discussed in code revision, and Ken and Tim, and is Jeffrey here?
Uh, no, he is...
Oh, Greg, you're gonna...
Yep, I'm out. I'm taking Jeff's spot today.
So Greg Berman from our building department, thank you. Good morning.
Morning.
To be here, and can you please introduce the topic?
Yes, good morning. Thank you. So what we have, it's a potential code revision to the business CR zoning district, which generally speaking is centered around the Wading River Manorville Road and 25A intersection of Wading River. And it also comprises the Eastwind property in Wading River. Right now, the way the code's written, drive-throughs are considered an accessory use, and they're permitted as an accessory use right now to banks and pharmacies. What we're dealing with in Wading River, as everybody's probably aware, you know, we recently had the McDonald's went out of business up on the corner of Wading River Manor Road. This potential code amendment would allow drive-through windows as an accessory use to restaurants, coffee shops, and cafes. So it would kind of expand the allowable uses as an accessory for drive-through windows to permit them for restaurants.
Years ago, when McDonald's was coming to town or trying to come to town in Wading River, there was a big outcry from the residents of Wading River who did not want a drive-through. They didn't want a drive-through in that area. They didn't like what drive-throughs represented. So they, there was a strong push, and McDonald's agreed to build a unit without a drive-through, which is kind of rare for them, although they do have one in Matituck. It does seem to survive quite well. So the residents were adamantly against drive-ins back in the day. Now, I've heard chatter from people in the area that are like, well, you know what? We'd rather have a McDonald's with a drive-through than an empty building sitting there. It looks horrible. It's been empty. It's been vacant for quite some time. So maybe we would now consider a drive-through. So I think that's why we really want to go to a public hearing with this and just hear from everybody. Maybe it's going to be the same thing, no drive-throughs, and that's fine. But we just wanted to bring it to light again. I think that was the bottom line to this whole situation. Bring it up, get a discussion going with the people of Wading River, and see how they feel. And then I guess the board will decide from there what we're going to do with it. But that was kind of the basis for this whole bringing it back up again.
Yes.
I can tell you from myself living in Wading River, things have grown over the years. We now have a CBS drive-through. We have a Walgreens drive-through. We've got multiple banks that have always had drive-throughs. It's not, it's not a new concept to Wading River. And I will tell you firsthand from driving by that building 10 times every single day, it's getting dilapidated. It's getting overgrown, and there's not going to be any money invested in it, should it remain. I will, I have spoken to the Wading River Civic Association and Sid Baal, and he's advocated that they are against putting a drive-through in there. But I've also have reached out to many, many of my neighbors, coworkers, people living in the community. And the other side is that many advocate for it. I also was, received a phone call, and it was a valid point. Why bring it up today is that, that handicap person felt that they were being unfairly treated because not having a drive-through in the area, that they had to travel to Rocky Point to come all the way into its riverhead, and that it wasn't fair that they should have easy accessibility as well. Sometimes, you know, with the pouring rain and times of COVID, to make a handicap person get out of their car to go inside to purchase food is, it's a valid complaint and concern. And so I think we take that into consideration as well. Many people are tired of the eyesore there. But I do will say that I will certainly also ask us to proceed with caution. I think that I have great concerns of the way the building is situated right now towards simply, there is a window in place for a drive-through, but I think if we just simply utilize that window, I think it can cause havoc with cars in a queue waiting...
Traffic flow, yes.
To get through that. I feel like the building, quite honestly, is built on the wrong side of the lot. If it was on the far side, I feel like you could put four or 15 cars in queue inside the parking lot, keep everybody contained, and it would work well. Where it's positioned right now, I have concerns. So even if, I think we go to a public hearing and that it's approved, I would be very cautiously looking at a site plan towards how these cars are going to get in line to keep, you know, to be in queue. Any project or proposal that comes in place that is going to back up traffic is a concern. You know, so I want to hear about, you know, the general public's support or word or against. But I just think that it's also going to take a lot of site plan work to make this work with the way the property is laid out in itself, and that's, that's a big concern as well. I look at the Starbucks up here that's in the shopping center by Lowe's. And up in there, and Dick's Sporting Goods, and it's, it's a disaster. Everybody's coming from eight different angles, blocking everything. We have to proceed with caution, make sure that it works.
They line up for those $8 cups of coffee.
Yeah, too rich for me.
So I mean, the code amendment in and of itself, while it would affect the McDonald's property specifically, it would also potentially allow restaurants with drive-throughs anywhere within that business CR district. I mean, realistically, I don't see Eastwind knocking their building down to go put a McDonald's up. But there could be a number of properties up in that. I actually, the planning board is currently reviewing an application for a potential site next to the dentist's office. There, as you head west of Wading River Manor Road. So that is a site that would potentially be, you know, affected by this. But again, you know, a, so it is a type one action under secret because the business CR zoning district exceeds 25 acres. So you're, the change in the allowable use is a type one. So the town board might consider doing a GEIS. Now, obviously, when you get to site-specific development, you know, a GEIS would not address every single site-specific and, you know, detail the queuing lanes and all, you know, potential traffic impacts. But just in general, compared to what's currently developed there, it's a very busy intersection. The town board would look at if the, the change in uses would necessarily trigger a significant increase in traffic beyond existing levels, which may or may not. That's something that we'd have to flush out through the secret process. But again, each individual site plan would come in, would have to address those issues individually.
And I think that's the difference, and I don't mean to single out, but just because there's an existing structure that just directly affects, meaning the McDonald's property, you know, I think any other new projects concerned would be planned accordingly.
Correct.
For drive-throughs. I have concerns about that position of that building and putting a drive-through right there and causing a traffic tight.
Yeah, no, the engineers would have to provide sufficient queuing spaces. I mean, we'd look to other, you know, we could have them, if they do come in, have them look at other specific sites during peak hours, you know, what are their anticipated queue lines? And, you know, the site does lend itself where the traffic flow could be managed onsite, I believe. But again, that would have to be, you know, identified on a case-by-case basis.
Just to touch on something you mentioned, Ken, is Sid Baal with the Wading River Civic said they are against it. But just in reality, and I appreciate the work the civics do, but Sid Baal and the Wading River Civic doesn't represent Wading River. It represents the people that belong to the Wading River Civic. And those people may have a common thought, but there are many others in the, in the area that have thoughts and views, and just because they're not with the civic, it doesn't mean that the civic determines what is or what isn't going to happen. And I don't say that as a negative to the civic. I just want to make people aware that there's people we run into in the grocery store and, you know, wherever, around town. And they may not belong to the civic, but they pay taxes, and they're concerned also. So we have to look at it as, that's why the public hearing to me is so important.
You're, you're absolutely right, because I think it's overwhelming the other way. I wish we could make everybody happy.
Right.
Which I'll agree with, you know, but it is overwhelmingly the other way. From the people that I talked to living in Wading River, and whether I'm online at the bank at the guest table, we go, when do we get our McDonald's project? When are you going to put something in there? What are you doing about this project? And it sits. And I think that, you know, maybe, you know, you have to wonder if there was a drive-through, would McDonald's have survived through the COVID pandemic? And it might have been a casualty of the COVID pandemic, you know, as a business.
The one, the one thing I will say, you know, when, when it gets time to public hearing, I welcome everybody to come here, for or against. You know, all, all the calls I get, you know, just in my day-to-day dealings with planning, I'm like, you know, nothing happens overnight, nothing happens in a vacuum. Things are discussed numerous times at work sessions. And typically, we don't hear about it until a shovel's in the ground or something's done. But I stress and impress upon people, these are public meetings. You can watch them on Zoom, watch them on Channel 22. You know, we're here. You guys answer your phone. I answer my phone all the time. So, you know, this is a public process, and we welcome the public input on it.
And if you can't make the public hearing, it's kept open for 10 days after that as a general course. So, you know, there is opportunity. If you want to speak up, please do.
And you can also write and email.
Write, email, yep. Smoke signals, whatever they want to get, get the message across somehow.
I think as society is advancing into making things as easy as possible, I mean, now, you know, we get friendlies delivered to my desk here in town hall, you know, with all the different things. You're just, you're simplifying things. You know, we've changed our, our demands over the number of years of what we want. We want things we want right away, and a drive-through does provide that.
Correct.
Yes, so I think that we should move forward to the public hearing. We need to hear from the public. For or against, and that's the purpose of a public hearing, is to be inclusive. And if the board agrees with me, let's move on and notice for a public hearing.
All right.
Are you okay with that?
Yep.
Notice, right?
Yes.
Thank you, Greg.
I'll work with Diane and get dates on that.
Okay.
Thanks, Greg.
Thank you. And on that point, I think we're going to, based on the results of COVID and people going virtually, we're going to make the town board meetings permanently virtually also.
Good.
To give people the opportunity. Most of the towns are adopting it.
They've been asking for it, so.
Yeah, and it's, it works for, for a lot of people. And if you're sick, you don't feel well, you go away, you can be engaged. So we're going to make the town board meetings permanently through, actually, virtually, permanently.
Sure, even with the price of fuel it wants to be.
Yes.
True, true.
So we're going to have to adjust the IT department a little bit, and we'll work on that. So that, that's, we'll make that an announcement.
Good.
Okay. So moving forward, our last discussion is an item concerning matters surrounding a change of Chapter 245, Chapter 245 littering and graffiti regarding penalties of offenses. And I'm going to ask Ken and Tim to please also introduce the topic to us. Good morning.
I'll kneel to Eric.
I'm going to defer to Eric also.
Okay, you're going to start off, Eric?
Okay, I will. This is just sort of a simple review of provisions of our town code that have somewhat antiquated penalties for offenses. We looked at Chapter 245. Currently, the fine schedule is a, is a $50 to $1,000 fine for violations, for violations relating to sort of an individual just littering, whether that's on their personal property or public property or any, any situation like that. And then we also looked at the provision that provides for littering penalties for commercial establishments and in relation to dumpsters. So we've reconfigured the penalties under both of those penalty sections in 245-10. So with respect to the violations relating to maintenance of private property, litter from vehicles, those, that violation is, we're going to take out the 50 as the minimum and increase it to 500. And the $1,000 penalty is going to remain as the max. And that just, that sort of provides a range of discretion for the prosecutor to take a look at the circumstances of the violation, and then also gives the judge a little discretion in entering the final judgment. The, with the commercial establishments, we're going to increase from the 250 minimum to a $1,000 minimum and 1,500 on the first offense, 1,500 to 2,500 on the second offense, and 2,500 to 3,500 on the third or succeeding offense within an 18-month period.
So I'd like to speak on behalf of the litter committee and why this has come up, and thank you for the work on this, Eric. And this is not to go after anybody who is leasing commercially. I'm not, you know, but a lot of these people that own these strip mall places don't live here, and they're not, they're not picking up the litter. So the purpose of the fine is to get it so that the cost of the fine is a cost to the business, not a cost of doing business. And, and I'm not going to name specific sites. You can speak to the chairman of litter committee. But there's quite a few places where there's a lot of litter that is not being addressed commercially. And I'm not talking about surrounding the dumpsters, even around the property in general. And, and there are a lot of businesses that their properties are pristine, you know. So anyway, that's the purpose of this.
Yeah, so there is, there is some commercial establishments that have been what I would call problematic properties up on Route 58. This will, you know, throw a little more obligation, a little, little more leverage in terms of when you issue a notice of violation or call a property manager and ask them to clean something up. You know, this will give, the prospect of this level of fine will hopefully put a little pressure on the property owner to make sure that they have a responsive property manager to get out there and clean it up.
Can we put them on notice?
Uh, we can. We can do notice, but...
I think we do first, like, first time around, you give them a chance, and then you're coming in with a heavy fine.
Yeah, typically...
I think it's a good approach.
Yeah, typically, code enforcement will issue a notice of violation. Or if they have information for a property manager, they'll try to make contact with them before they would issue a violation. And if they're not responsive, or if they are responsive and don't do it fast enough, then, then code enforcement typically result, resorts to issuing violations.
So with that, Eric, and I'm just curious about this, I don't know the answer at all. And there are some places that are, can get way out of hand, and again, I'm not going to single anybody out. But this building and grounds goes and picks up that litter, can we charge the owner of the property for doing that?
We could most likely do that if we, if we put them on notice and then they don't clean it up. And then it would sort of work like, like a Chapter 251 where we put in a res, yeah. Yeah, where we, where we put in a resolution to the town board to authorize BAG to go and, you know, assess what the cleanup would be, and then authorize them to go conduct the cleanup and provide us with the final schedule accounting of expenses incurred that the town board then could pass a resolution to add to the tax bill.
Well, we do it when people don't mow their lawn, so it's overgrown. And we go in, we clean it up, and then we build them.
Yeah, I think specifically with respect to Chapter 245, we would likely need to add a specific provision providing for that the way that we have in Chapter 251.
Can we do that? I think that would be beneficial to...
Okay.
Yeah, can we do that?
So I can take this back and look at adding something like that in.
So Eric, and I, I know this is, we're, we're talking about litter here.
Yes.
I don't know if we can do this, but can we do the same with potholes? I mean, there are some places, I'll, I'll tell you, Tangi, you'll never see a pothole. They make sure they take care of it. There are other commercial properties where there are potholes, and it's unfair to our residents that they have to drive through potholes when they go on a commercial property.
So that's going to, that's, that would be under maintenance of private property. Usually, parking lots are governed by a site plan that was approved. There's usually, you know, conditions to that site plan that require them to maintain their parking lots. So in the past, when code enforcement has pursued enforcement based on excessive potholes or, you know, whatever, it's been a site plan violation. But I can work with Rich Downs and see if there's a way to make that more clear in one of our other provisions, whether it be Chapter 245 or Chapter 251.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Great.
When it comes to graffiti, $50 doesn't cover the cost to clean it up?
Doesn't bother the kids, got a remover.
Now it's 250, right?
Well, I'm saying, from 50, we got to go up, yeah, to 500.
I think graffiti, I don't know if that's under Article 1 in Chapter 245. I think that's Article 2, and I don't have that in front of me.
But I want to make sure that the fines are going up, because I guess they're, they're not appropriate. Probably fines.
Let me look. We'll pull it up really quick.
Just to piggyback on this, in the opposite spectrum, this is something I've kind of wanted to do for a long time. Is I think, and Bobby, you mentioned it, there are some businesses that go out of their way to keep their properties spectacular. And I think we, as a board, should be obligated to recognize those properties. And I would like to introduce something like a Hall of Fame that, like, say, quarterly, we would honor and do a proclamation for a business that goes above and beyond to keep their properties looking pristine. And I mean, I can name a half dozen right off the top of my head. But I think collectively as a board, maybe we can do that, and we can quarterly issue a proclamation for our Hall of Fame commercial properties that are going above and beyond. I also talked a while ago to, to the legal department about doing a Hall of Shame for properties that are not doing it. And they said, no, you'd really better not want to do that. I would love to, believe me, but I think...
There'll be a lot of people on there.
Yeah, to promote the ones that do. I, I think it's something, maybe, Madam Supervisor, we can talk about doing a quarterly-type recognition for a business.
Yeah, a certificate of appreciation would be good. The proclamation is an act, and it's the higher level, but I think a certificate of appreciation would be great.
And maybe every quarter, a different board member or the supervisor would, would pick, or we could all sit down together, whatever, however it works out.
Absolutely, what could I do?
I, I'll tell you, Tim, and I'm glad that you're saying this because the litter committee has actually brought this up, and that's something they suggested that they would like to do.
Yeah, they should be recognized. I mean, you, you know the properties. When you ride through town, you're like, wow, that just makes our town better. And they should be recognized.
When's the next meeting for the litter committee?
It's been sporadic. We met the other night at 8:00.
And you have a cleanup coming up? And you have a cleanup coming up anytime soon?
We don't, I know, I'll get into that.
It was very successful, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah.
You guys, it was, it was, it was great.
They have, they have brought that up, so, and they can, they can, they have the list. They talk to the owners of all these commercial properties, the corporations, wherever they are in the country. It's.
Good.
Thank you.
To Councilman Rothwell's point on the question, really, on the graffiti, that is provided for in chapter 245-19, and that is a fine of not more than 2,500 or imprisonment for a year, for not more than a year. It's under our town code, a Class A misdemeanor. I can say that in about four years prosecuting town code violations in justice court, the graffiti violations come up rarely. If they're, if I prosecuted one or two, I, that would be my best guess.
There's no minimum on it?
Well, the minimum, it just says not more than 250, 2,500, so the minimum would be zero. But, I mean, you would never, you would never offer that.
Oh, to Ken's point, to me, there should be a minimum, and I'm not, again, I'm not going to identify the operation, but there was graffiti on a building on 58, and the person, the owners that were leasing the building did take care of the graffiti. They also put a fence up where people were coming through and actually hanging out. There's photographs, I got photographs of all of this. Litter committee is like, they're like litter warriors.
So you, there's going to be a difference between a person who is caught actually doing the graffiti. That's what this, this provision is intended to govern. And then there's provisions for property and building maintenance for someone who has graffiti on there. You don't necessarily know who did it, but it is still the property owner's responsibility to address it in the absence of finding, you know, the person who actually committed the offense or did the graffiti.
It's tough to prove because they literally have to be caught in the act or have to be under camera surveillance. And unfortunately, it's, it's tough sometimes to bring somebody to justice for it, but that's, it's also under the criminal, you know, be a criminal charge for graffiti, so.
Yeah, and under, under that, under that Article 2 of chapter 245, which relates to graffiti, there is also provisions relating to having on your person the tools of someone who does graffiti. So your aerosol cans or markers that would be used to do graffiti, that sort of thing.
Great. Anything else? We're good? Thank you, Eric, have a good day.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone. This concludes our items for today, our discussion items, and we're going to move on to reading the resolutions. Devin, can you please come forward? Good morning.
Good morning, everyone. Everybody ready? So before we get started, just to remind the board, we had, at our last town board meeting, we had eight public hearings. And we have in the packet today, six of those eight public hearings, the proposed adoptions of those. The two that are not in the queue, potentially for your guys' consideration today, are the two that we had agreed to leave open, passed the 10-day comment period to go beyond the next parking district meeting. So those two hearings that we had, 301 with the parking schedule and 301 supplementary use, which was the pileup, we're keeping up until close of business on the 27th. So just to remind everybody of that.
Before you start, is this the time, do I wait for you to read the ones that I want to table? Or should I just tell you what I want to table?
Well, we can read the resolutions in order, and then we can talk about them as we go. And you can maybe tell us which ones you might want to table. The first six in the queue today are the 301s from, that we just spoke about, from the public hearings that we had the other day at the, at the town board meeting. So Councilman Kern, I know you mentioned maybe wanting to talk about all six of those. So if you want to group them together, it's certainly a prerogative, however you want to handle it.
Yes, well, I'll take.
Hold on a second. I don't think that the, the 10-day period for public comment is over.
Yeah, so the.
So why are we bringing this up? I think we should wait until after the public comment meeting.
So the 10-day clock for the other six.
When does it end?
Tomorrow, close of business.
Okay, so we have a resolution that's going up to be voted, and we still haven't closed up. Well, we're going to vote on it, it's up, and then we're going to vote on it.
Yeah, so you guys would vote on it.
Wednesday.
On Wednesday, at the next.
Wednesday, on the meeting next week.
Typically.
So is this a question for Eric?
Next week. Why is it Wednesday next week?
Do we change our names?
No, that's, they went in on, in January, they were approved. Yeah, I think it's.
Eric?
Yes.
We have.
So Eric, the board is questioning, this is the list of resolutions for today. I explained, I just reminded them that the first six are the 301 adopts from the town board meeting of the other day. The two that are not included in that list there are the two that we're keeping open past the parking district meeting. Yeah, they're not in there, right, these two? They're not in there?
Yeah, that's, we follow the last two-year schedules. Yeah, and they're all, all those dates are voted in in the beginning of January by resolution.
So I think what the supervisor is questioning, the supervisor questioning is whether they should wait on all of these past the open comment period.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So the clock on the, on the written comment, open comment ends tomorrow, close of business? They're going to vote on these on Wednesday, so they're questioning whether we should wait on all of these until after the clock is run out for tomorrow.
Yeah, the com, open comment period has not ended, and I think there was some concern with Marty Zanusski. What resolution was that, do we remember?
I think it involves all of them.
It involved most of them on the 301 from the Business Advisory Committee. They had issues on them, so I, Bob had spoken to me this morning about maybe wanting to table these to not this, not vote on this next Tuesday. Written comment, I understand, is done tomorrow, but there is some conversations that need to be had over these, so.
Well, with, with written comment ending tomorrow, there wouldn't be anything that prevents you from adopting these provisions next Wednesday. If there was written comments that came in by the close of business yesterday that affected either or any one of your opinions as to whether it should be adopted or not, that could be considered, and that, you know, you could give that explanation when the resolution comes up.
We would table the resolution at Wednesday's meeting, is what you would say.
Well, we could table it today.
Well, today, you could decide to just, you know, take it, take it from.
Yes, so we don't have to address it on.
But what, what I would suggest is, you know, what, to what extent are you keeping this discussion open amongst yourselves or taking in, you know, additional consideration? Because this is something that a lot of planning and legal expertise has gone into. There's been a lot of public input on it, and there were, I would say, you know, a small number of people who spoke, you know, with criticism of it. But, you know, it's up to you to, you know, assign weight to that and take that in consideration in the context of, of the work that Barry Long did on it, the work that our planning department put into it, and the work that our town attorney's office put into it.
The request from the Business Advisory was for them to meet with the downtown revitalization and also meet with Barry Long to try to discuss some of these items that they feel are, are completely inappropriate or can work, but maybe need to be adjusted a little bit.
Fine-tuned.
Right.
Yeah, I, I think we should, we should afford that. I think we should afford that request. It's important.
Can we extend the time period for written comment?
Yes.
At this point, you can, you know, you can, there can be a motion to extend that written comment period. You could, I would assume, yes, you could, you could extend that.
So that these parties can sit and meet and also involve, it has to involve your office also.
But, I mean, whether you extend the written comment period or not, you know, there's, whether you add the adopt resolution to the, to the packet, you know, that's not really affected significantly by the written comment.
Can I, can I just say?
You can, you can, you can wait on bringing these up as much as, you know, as long as you want, provided it doesn't get stale. So, you know, I wouldn't push it out six months. And then if there's, if there's substantive changes to what's already been submitted, it's going to have to be reposted for another public, public hearing.
Can I, can I just, so I just bring you up, just for the, just for the record, so you know, I, the Business Advisor, which I'm the liaison to, right, had asked me to go to Dawn to get a meeting with Barry Long. They also, okay, and Dawn said she would make that happen upon getting their request, which came today. So I think we're, you know, nobody's looking to make this go stale. They're looking to meet with Barry. There are inconsistencies in here, there are some that.
What inconsistencies?
Well, I'll, you didn't get a copy of this?
What is that?
This is an email that came today.
Can I just try to simplify one thing?
Please do.
Just in terms of, like, we're not, I think you're getting a consensus that most of us are not happy the way things are written. There are, there are general concerns. So even if we strike out one or two requirements of it, it's still going to have to go to a new public hearing, right?
Correct.
So I think that we just need to go back to the table, strike out the things that we want, rewrite them, set up a new public hearing, and, and to reissue it with some of the corrections. I personally feel that our local downtown businesses don't have to go grass on their roof. I think we've gotten a little too far, you know, on the green side of things, you know.
Well, I mean, that would be up to.
These are things, I'm just using as one simple example, things that we need to address. So there are ways in which we can be environmental friendly and correct, but without someone having to bring a lawnmower up on the roof.
So these are standards for new construction. These are design and size guidelines for new buildings. So, I mean, I just, I just want to make sure we're addressing exactly, you know, what you're, I want to make sure that whatever we're proposing to change here, it addresses the concerns that you have. Or if you have concerns that are maybe relevant to another issue and aren't really intended to be covered by these specific, you know, building dimensional regulations.
I think a lot of public comment enlightened some of the concerns, and I think we need to go back and redraft some of this.
Okay.
Yeah, and address some of the comments.
I'm going to give you one, I'll give you two examples, okay? One is, they want to go net zero. So, and every, they, everybody on that committee agrees, hey, let's go to net zero.
To the extent practical.
Was that?
It says to the extent practical.
To extent practical. So they're looking at who came up with 14-foot-high windows, right, which puts huge demand on HVAC. And so you're actually defeating the goal of getting to net zero, just, just by that one element. Okay, they also had alternatives to a, to a green roof. They completely understand green roofs. They could, they also understand the expense of green roofs, so they had some other alternatives they'd like to talk about, which captures the rainwater and actually drives it down to the ground, to greenery down on the ground. Those are, those are a couple of them. One of the other ones is that the way the building is skin, all right, there are, there are solar tiles that Tesla made. Why they're not required on the south wall. There's nothing, because they, they tell you the materials in the pattern book how they want it skinned. They just have questions, and so to continue to, to guide developers, they would like some, they would just like some clarity, that's all.
Okay.
And, and this, I'll send you a copy of this.
Is there a way of getting the comments that people made, aside from me sitting down and reviewing all the tapes, what recommendations they made, and maybe we can all get a list, and then we can all discuss it?
I think.
Because I thought they made some viable comments.
There would be minutes of the public hearing, right, Diane?
Certainly, there's minutes of the public hearing.
Yeah.
And so that would, that would have all of the comments that came in.
I thought there was some valid concerns there.
That coupled with the email we received this morning indicating their concerns will be very helpful to use.
Okay, so would it be helpful to schedule this for a further work session at some point?
Yes.
Absolutely, absolutely. So let's table it, table all the 301s, and then we put it up in the very near future, next month? Would a month give it?
Actually, even, hopefully sooner, because, you know, I would, I mean, there, everybody wants to do it as soon as possible. Nobody wants to hold this up. But they just need, they're just looking for clarity. There are, there are other things in this email that, you know, and other things that were discussed that I will speak to you about.
Okay.
I think this is progress, you know what I mean? We're getting there, so we're accomplishing something, but we're also, we're obligated to listen to the public and their concerns. And there are validated concerns and validated reasons to go back to the table.
All right, so I'm going to make a motion to.
Understandable.
To table resolutions 1 through 6.
Okay, so.
Actually, it would be.
If I could just say, the, the first three resolutions are the ones that relate to the changes to DC 1. So resolution number four relates to the site plan fees that it incorporates.
And we will go with that.
An ability to charge the developers for expert engineering fees, et cetera, that need to be, that need to happen. Number five appears to be a duplicate of number four. Planning put in, in adoption for that, and so did legal, so one of those will need to come out.
So we have two of the same resolutions?
Yes.
So let's keep the planning, prop, prop.
Which, whichever, whichever one, I'll speak with planning, and they say essentially the same thing. So just one of them needs to come out.
Okay.
And number six?
Number six is the small lot ordinance.
Oh, that's fine. Okay, so.
So 1 through 4, let's remove those, and we won't deal with them at this board meeting.
Okay, and we'll put it back up once everything's in place? That's fine.
Number six is going to move forward, small lots?
Yes.
Yes.
Five and six, or four and six will move forward, whichever one they decide on.
Which one are we going to decide with, so we can put it up for?
I think we should argue over four and five.
No, let's keep the planning.
Whichever works out with four or five.
This is a planning.
I'll leave it to the board to see who drafted it better. I'll leave it to the board to see who drafted it better, planning or legal.
Let's, I'll take the planning. Because they know the code better.
I think they were both finally written.
Good try there, Eric.
All right, so we'll jump to resolution number seven. I think we're all comfortable with 1 through 6 now. Number seven, authorizes purchase of highway equipment for highway maintenance, construction, reconstruction, and/or snow removal. Number eight, acceptance of donation of sign from Wickland family. Number nine, sets hours for town beaches. Number 10, grants preliminary site plan approval for the site plan application of 133-139 Railroad Avenue, 133-139 Railroad Avenue, Riverhead, New York, Suffolk County Tax Department number 600-128-3-17.1.
Oh, say that again.
Number 11, terminates an employee. Number 12, awards bid for 2022 annual procurement contract. Number 13, appoints a call-in recreation aide to the recreation department. Number 14, appoints a call-in recreation aide to the recreation department. Number 15, appoints a principal office assistant. Number 16, accepts the retirement of a homemaker. Number 17, accepts the resignation of an automotive equipment operator. Number 18, accepts the retirement of the water district maintenance crew leader. Number 19, authorizes the settlement of claim made against the town of Riverhead, John Mahoney. Number 20, authorizes the town clerk to publish in post notice to bidders for chipper box truck. Number 21, authorizes the supervisor to execute a seventh amended agreement authorizing the town to accept funds from the Suffolk County Office for the Aging for the Purpose of Implementing the Town's Nutrition Program for the Elderly. Number 22, authorizes grant application submission for Class A biosolids. Number 23, appoints a recreation specialist to the recreation department. Number 24, appoints a recreation specialist to the recreation department. Number 25, U-Haul Facility Water Capital Project, number 82207, budget adoption. Number 26, supports, endorses, and authorizes pursuit of Suffolk County Downtown Revitalization Round 20 funding for enhancements to town-owned alleyway adjacent to Suffolk Theater. Number 27, authorizes cosponsorship of a Live on 25 Street Festival on July 1st, July 15th, July 29th, August 12th, 2022, ring date, August 19th, 2022, 5:00 p.m. to 9:30 p.m. With the Riverhead Business Improvement District Management Association, Inc., along Main Street between Griffin Avenue and Union Avenue, and inclusive of the Riverhead portion of Beconic Avenue. Authorizes the supervisor to execute a license agreement with designated craft food vendors, alcohol vendors, and other parties. Suspends enforcement of Riverhead Town Code Section 205-3. Suspends enforcement of Riverhead Town Code Section 205-3, public consumption and open possession of an alcoholic beverage as solely limited to aforementioned dates, time, and place of the Alive on 25 Street Festival. Number 28, appoints the new seasonal beach personnel to the recreation department. Number 29, awards bid for 2022 annual construction contract. Number 30, appoints an intern to the fire marshals department. Number 31, authorizes the supervisor to execute a stipulation with a police officer. Number 32, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend chapter 259 of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Raceways, 259.4, days and hours of operation rescheduling. Number 33, sewer district capital project number 20024, Best Western Hotel Indigo closure. Number 34, Riverhead Sewer District bond authorization. Number 35, public interest order for the increase and improvement of the facilities of the Riverhead Sewer District in the town of Riverhead, Suffolk County, New York. Number 36, grants the place for Learning, Inc., DBA Long Island Science Center, and exemption from real property taxes for the 2020-2021 assessment rule. Number 37, approves special event, chapter 255, resolution for Latin Music Festival, June 12th, 2022. Number 38, schedules public hearing on proposed amendment to Town Code, chapter 301, zoning and land development known as the Long Island Workforce Housing Act. And number 39, assumes lead agency status and issues negative declaration pursuant to seeker for the proposed Town Code amendment known as the Long Island Workforce Housing Act.
Thank you, Devin. Okay, in a moment, I'm going to ask you for a first and a second to go into executive session to discuss the following.